Hello, everybody. I'm Jim Webb, Web Weekly Live. We're at Executive Plaza. I'm with the county commissioners. Chairman, Mr. Scott Metzger, good to see you, Scott.
Good to see you, Jim.
Tony Masser, you've been here how many years now as a county commissioner?
This is my ninth year.
Ninth year. Boy, time's flying, huh?
Sure is.
And we got the masked man who joined us. He was just a picture to my left last time. Mr. Rick Maribito.
That's right. The last time you had this, I was appearing virtually. And here I am in the flesh.
And we're practicing. So anybody out there, we're practicing in safe space. We're far enough apart. We're social distancing. I hate that term. I like safe space. Social distancing makes it sound like we're alienating ourselves from everybody. And Rick Maribito, will you ask him if he wants us to wear a mask? Constitution of the United States of America, everybody is allowed to make a decision. And I think you look out for your fellow Americans. And what did you say, Mr. Maribito?
Well, I said I was wearing a mask because I don't want to. If I'm positive and I'm asymptomatic, meaning I don't have any symptoms, but I'm COVID positive, I don't want to spread that infection to either Mr. Metzger, Mr. Webb, or Mr. Masser. Now, obviously, it would be their decision, although, you know, we try to encourage it. They are safe away from each other. So we're encouraging our public to try to do that.
Which is six feet or two, I believe it's two arm lengths that the CDC and the Surgeons General also is recommending. But obviously, and we're not going to dwell on the masking, it's more about protecting your neighbor, also protecting yourself. But we've got to get over it to the point where we recognize our fellow Americans' wishes and understand and respect each way. And if Mr. Maribito would have asked us three to wear masks, what have we done?
Wore them.
We would have wore them. That's simple. And they're all here. Anything you want to add to that, sir?
No.
All right. So let's get right into it. The governor came out last Friday. I knew what he was going to say. I wished I would have went away for the Memorial Day weekend, but I did. My phone blew up. Everybody's phone blew up. Obviously, we didn't go out of yellow to green. They kept us in yellow. I believe as of this morning, it was 161 cases, 18 deaths, all in nursing facilities. Manor Care in Jersey Shore has been hit hard. Good people up there. We've all gone up to Manor Care. We've all talked with them. Mr. Maribito, you want to add anything about Manor Care and the folks up in the west end of the county?
So yesterday, by the way, how does the sound come through? Okay, with the mask? Is it okay? Okay. Yesterday, at the commissioners' meeting, we had a request. Some of you may have seen it.
We could cut your mouth out.
There you go. We had a request at the meeting yesterday by the Center for Independent Living to allow them to, or to assist them in helping Manor Care. You know, it's interesting. I was at the vigil that they had last week. And this was a press release signed by, or I should say, news article, Skilled Nursing News, May 5, 2020, about Manor Care. Manor Care is owned by ProMedica Health System, a Toledo-based company with about 222 skilled nursing and assisted living facilities. And they have had 1,500 positive COVID-19 cases with a mortality rate near 15%. This is according to the chief medical officer, Dr. Mark Loth. What's fascinating about what he said in the report is, he said that in response to questions, 500 employees are either in the process of being tested or have tested positive. And it doesn't, it's not clear whether it includes the other 1,500. But this is what he said, quote, "What is particularly distressing even beyond this is that when we have done full-house testing for employees and patients, we have seen that up to 70% of our healthcare providers who have been tested as positive were completely asymptomatic. And anywhere from 30% to 50% of our patients who have tested positive did not present with any overt symptoms that would have suggested that they had this deadly and dawning virus." That's the medical director from the chain. And he was actually asking for help. One of the things that we are trying to do is, and we have to discuss this among ourselves, is to see, we have a proposal from the Center for Independent Living, which is a licensed agency that transitions people from nursing homes to live and get care in their home. Under state and federal law, you have a right to be in an institution such as a nursing home. You also have a right to exercise what's called a waiver. It's a waiver of that right to get your care at home. So anyone can do this if they have a person who's in a nursing home and they want them to be cared at home. And what we're trying to see is if we can assist by initiating some financial assistance to help get people out of Manor Care. We know that there are people two and three and four to a room. And I really don't want to get into a blame game with Manor Care.
No, definitely not. That's not.
That's why I read the quote I did from their Director of Medical Services. I think that any way that we can help by putting people in private rooms in a hotel allows them to get fewer people in double rooms there at the home. But it's something that we have to continue to discuss. But the Center for Independent Living is licensed by the state and does this all the time. They move people out of nursing homes. And so there's a local hotel owner who's offered to provide a facility. Obviously, no one else will be in that hotel. This will only be for COVID-19 folks or people who are being quarantined.
Now, just so there's no misconception out there, I did not know you were allowed to move. I've had people call me that they weren't able to move relatives out, parents out. You can move them out of a nursing facility right now.
Well, so what has to be done is that it has to be done under the regulations that the Department of Health provides for those agencies that it certifies to move people. Or the doctor has to say, you no longer need to be in the skilled nursing facility. You can go home. Well, obviously, if someone is in the skilled nursing facility, they can't just go home.
And I'm not sure, but I don't know if the Department of Health is allowing anybody to move. This is part of the issue, other than Dr. Levine's mother.
No, yes. No, they, no, no, no. They are absolutely, the Department of Human Services, actually, I'm sorry, is the department that supervises the transition of people from skilled nursing homes to home care. In other words, imagine a world without COVID-19. You had a relative there, and you could get them the same care at home, and you decided I wanted them. You exercise your rights under federal and state law. That's the same thing here. The only difference now is that we need to do a lot of people very quickly, and that requires funds.
Right. So you can't individually move a person out. It has to be, go through an approval process now, and they can be moved with the...
Oh, they, no, they can move. Individuals can move out. In fact, they have 10 people in this proposal that they sent us. They have 10 people who contacted them and said, we want to be out of here.
Right.
And again, I'm not playing, I don't want to get into blaming the nursing home. I just think it's important that people be able to exercise their rights.
Absolutely.
Just like we want people to open their businesses if they're able to. We want people to be able to.
We sort of got off track there a little bit, but I think that's outstanding. We did. I think one thing all four of us can say, our thoughts, our prayers, are with the folks at Jersey Shore Manor Care, for the families, for the residents, for the people working there. Just a terrible situation, and I think it's important the community, you know, support them. And good information. Let's get back on track here, Chairman Metzger. Governor comes out, doesn't open the county. People are upset. We all heard about it. I compliment you guys. You wrote a letter to send it to Governor Wolf. Let's just get right into it. We're going to put the full letter under the comments from the commissioners to the governor, so you can read it in length out there. And it's an outstanding letter, and I think it sums everything up. I'll lead you right into that.
Well, thank you. I was very disappointed to hear the announcement on Friday. I immediately contacted some of our representatives, spoke to Representative Wheel, and also Congressman Keller on Friday evening for approximately a half hour. And their concerns also were the same. At that point, we came back. We had a discussion about drafting a letter and did so yesterday, outlining to the governor, asking him to please reconsider moving us to the green phase. Our concern is, we don't feel that he has the accurate facts of Lycoming County. Whoever's giving him the information, if he's basing this, because we've passed all the metrics, all the metrics as handed down by the state, the study that was put out by a school in Pittsburgh, the 50,000 per 100,000, or 50 per 100,000 residents, infected individuals, every measure they have, we've passed it. We have 75 people that have COVID, unfortunately, in this home, and it is a concern. We're doing the best we can do to try to assist them.
And 90, not to interrupt, but 90 in the Jersey Shore area in general.
Yeah, 91.
So 91 out of the 161, which leaves us...
Well, there's 26 in Sidney Williamsport.
Okay.
And, you know, that's our hub of our county. There's 26 there. There's six in South Williamsport. There's seven in Muncie. Any given time, that many people have the flu.
Absolutely. And many of those have recovered.
Right. Yeah. So we asked the Secretary of Health weeks ago, or actually, two weeks ago, what's the number of people that have recovered? Well, they put the number out each day on how many people have it overall over the 10 weeks. They list the deaths, but they don't list the number of people that recovered. The Secretary of Health said that we would have that information by the end of the week. There was nothing actually released until, I believe, Saturday. There was a percentage put on it, maybe 60% statewide. Coming back in our county in the last 15 days, we have had 29 cases, 29 new cases over that 15-day period. So with that kind of data, we have, our county has been responsible. Our citizens have been responsible. You can see that by the number of law enforcement contacts with our businesses are very low, the verbal warnings. There's been no citations issued. So the people have complied to flatten that curve. UPMC has reopened all their operations. There's nobody in their ICU beds that have this. There's nobody that has COVID in EVAN down Lewisburg. I talked to the director down there. They're without anybody that is in their ICU beds. So the fact that we're not overrunning the system with COVID cases, we flattened that curve, it's time to give the governor the accurate information in what it's doing to our economy and what it's doing to our businesses.
And flatten the curve, again, tip of the cap to everybody out there. It took the community, the county, everybody's effort to really step up. And I mean, they follow, I believe we're seven weeks into this. Is that correct?
Actually, 10 weeks.
Wow, 10 weeks. Time flies, huh? But the folks within our area have done everything necessary, and we're at the point now where we've got to get back to work. We've got to get back open. But last night, the new numbers, or this morning, were one new case. So there's one new case. Everybody's done what's required. And I'll kick that over to you from a business standpoint, Commissioner Masser, because I know, tell me about what's going on with the business folks in the county.
I think all of us have businesses right here.
Right.
We have real estate and construction. It's painful, and it's...
I just like you because you tell the straight skinny.
Okay. And it's dire. Just in the last couple of days, I met with some restaurant owners, bar owners. I met with some salon par, barbers. Listen, I want to go back to one fact, that when we talk about people that tested positive for the COVID, that were, 70% were asymptomatic, okay, we should have learned our lesson there. We should learn our lesson, that it's not as bad for the majority of the people as it is for the elderly.
Absolutely.
And we need to get those businesses back open now. It's proving. Follow the science. We are under the metrics that was, you know, formulated by the governor. We're there. We're below it, okay? And these people need the help now. They're bar owners and restaurant people that they can, they cannot wait much longer. Here's why. One, you spend a tremendous amount of money when you're training an employee. And that's critical, because these employees now, there are jobs out there. And these restaurant workers and bartenders, they're going to be going out for different jobs because they're not working.
The world's opened back up around them, and they're seeking other work.
And not to mention, and this is critical, how many weeks did you say? We're on our 11th week. There are many people that have not collected an unemployment check yet. So not only have they lost their health care, they haven't gotten any money. And the facts and the science is there. We should be open. We're following his guidelines. We're within the metrics, and there's no excuses. They're going to have to make a tough decision. I'll stand right with them. If they want to open up Friday, I'm right with them. Let's go do it. But another, you know, there are other different things that businesses are absolutely having trouble with. Not all of them received their PPP at the same time.
Well, some didn't receive it all. It all depended if you got it quick. It was difficult for small business owners. A lot of them don't have the staff and folks to help them. It was difficult to understand the process and to get right on it.
Yes. But the ones that received it later, I believe there was a deadline.
They have eight and a half weeks from the time that they receive their check to spend the money. If they spend 75% of the money on payroll and, I think, maybe utilities, then they don't have to repay it.
But if they, if they just received it two weeks ago, guess what? And they turn green. They receive the money.
Oh, that's interesting. To be honest with you, I don't know whether they still have eight and a half weeks or not, but they may be...
So they would not be able to comply with that, which then turns the grant into a loan.
Right.
Okay, these are just a few of the things that our business owners are having. Our construction, and I have to, I have to give people a lot of credit. The construction business is booming.
Oh, absolutely.
Every, you know, it's going really well. So I hope that's an indicator of how we're going to flourish here in the near future, you know, for everyone.
And I think we'll come back, the importance of right now is we've, I think everybody's maxed out as long as they can go. I mean, let's cut to the chase. We need to get open and get people back to work, get our economy turned, and get the county, get revenue coming back. People forget about, get cars sold, get the tax base coming back in, get the county, get revenue collected, because there's been a mandatorium on, nobody's paying taxes right now, correct, on property taxes? When does that start back up?
Well, people have actually been very responsible, and they are paying their current taxes, which has been a good sign. But we don't know what happens next year, because I want to add on to what Commissioner Masser said, that I spoke to a prominent businessperson in the area who has spoken to over 100 businesses. Now, these are businesses that have been around for at least 10 years or longer, okay? Speaking to these businesses, he shared with me that if this would go on another two months, one out of every three businesses in Lycoming County will close their doors permanently. If this goes into the fall, one out of every two businesses in Lycoming County are going to close their doors permanently. We can't have that.
Absolutely not.
With a median household income of, if in the 50s, this isn't a real rich area. The people, it's a beautiful area to raise your kids and support your family, but we don't live on the high salaries that they have in the cities. And so every income is very important.
And at the beginning, just to throw some numbers out, not to go backwards, to go forward, but all the deaths have been in nursing facilities. We've talked about Jersey Shore Manor Care. When we first started this, they predicted 500 deaths a day in the state of Pennsylvania, that there'd be a 1% death rate across the board. Right now, when I wrote my article, I did the math, and I did, hopefully, we're talking four zeros. We're talking .00001. Was that four?
Yes.
So we're way below where they thought we'd be. We're way below the mandate, with the information they took to mandate the closures, we're way below what prompted the governor and everybody to close America. Now it's time to get it back open, Mr. Governor Wolf.
Yep. And we're at .021% nationally when it comes to those deaths. So we've borrowed $6 trillion to control a pandemic that has a death rate that low, when there's 15 other diseases above that on the scale that we've never closed an economy for. Not to take away from the seriousness of this, but what we've done is, I believe, we've gone backwards. We should have initially attacked the places, when this came into the United States, it came into a nursing home. It came into Washington State. 45 people died almost instantly, okay? There was no plan across the nation to protect nursing homes, to assist the living. There was, we're putting people that have COVID back into those homes, when those people are at risk, and we're putting them more at risk by doing that. So I believe I said a month ago, we need a safer at home, not a stay-at-home, but a safer at home, where people that are vulnerable, people that are at risk, stay home. We live in a country based on freedoms, have choices. We need to allow those businesses, they're going to take care of their customers. They're their friends. They can do it responsibly and safely. They need those people, and they want those people to come back. They're going to cater to the customer. They're going to make sure the customer feels safe and secure, or they know the customer won't come back. So they're going to take the precautions. But we need to give them the freedom to be able to open that store and that business so they can have that opportunity to live on their own and pay their own bills.
And I'm going to go over to Mr. Maribito here, because he provides great balance within the county, and I admire you for that. And I know how cautious you are because of your family situation. And you and I have agreed, the right thing to do was close for a couple of weeks to start, get your bearings. Obviously, your name's on the letter, so that makes me feel good, and you're supporting the reopening of the county. Tell me from your standpoint, what the difference is from your eyes from now to then.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I think that what we're saying to Governor Wolf, and tomorrow we have a call with the Department of Health, is we're saying, look, we've been following the science, and we want to follow the science. And the science tells us that we're in a place where we can move from yellow to green. If your science tells you something differently, Department of Health, tell us what it is. And we write, I don't think Governor Wolf has been keeping people in a yellow or a green phase in some punitive way. I think that's very important. I mean, if elected officials, ourselves included, had not acted with a certain amount of responsibility, and there had been massive deaths, the public would have said to us, what are you guys doing? You know, your job is to help protect us and so forth. So I don't think the governor's acting out of a punitive motive. I think that what's important is, if we're going to say to people, follow the science, then we need to, at the same way, follow the science to get ourselves reopened. And also, to understand, and this is, we're hoping tomorrow, if the answer is in the negative, understand from the Department of Health, what is wrong? What do we have to do? Why haven't we met the metrics? You know, what, because according to our understanding, we have, that was one point. The other point I wanted to make is that I thought Commissioner Metzger brought up something very good about the doing something to protect the folks in the nursing homes. One of the reasons we're trying to look at this situation with Manor Care is, we have the hindsight of Monday morning quarterbacking in the sense that we're looking at what happened in Washington State two and a half months ago, but we have the opportunity to do something now. Because my fear, and I think my colleagues share the fear, is that if the infection in the home jumps out of the home, and this is what we heard from a constituent yesterday who lives in Jersey Shore, you could develop a much larger hotspot, right, with a meatpacking facility up there in Jersey Shore.
Absolutely.
That hires a lot of people. So it's actually, you know, us putting up some money to help move people out now, by the way, it's money that we're going to try to get reimbursed for. It's not money that we're just willy-nilly. It's an opportunity to try to solve the problem in the nursing home, which is where the major problem is in this county. I mean, it is, let's be clear. It's the numbers that were read, six people in South Williamsport, you know, 26 people in the city of Williamsport. Now, does that mean we still need to be responsible? Absolutely. You know, we still need to do that. But our letter is an attempt to try to get the Department of Health to tell them, as the commissioner said earlier, that we've been doing what we did. You know, businesses have closed, as Commissioner Masser said. We've been asking people to social distance.
And back to what's near and dear to my heart, I understand, like the folks in Jersey Shore that are worried about it spreading outside of the facility, completely understand that. But in the same breath, they've got to look at it. It's been within their community this long now. I mean, we're going on this, we've been shut down, and I go back to where I believe in January and February it hit our county. It went through. And I know there's a lot of people, and we don't want to put specu, I put the speculation out there in my article. I think it went through then, through our county. And Constitution of the United States of America has been stomped all over, no matter if you want to say that it was necessary or not. That's not the issue. First Amendment rights have been stomped by Governor Wolf, and it's time to get the rights back in the people. And I want to, back to what you said, there isn't a business. There isn't one business that wants to put customers in harm way. Or let's go a step farther, have them pass away from the COVID. How is that going to help their business? But what they want to do is get their businesses back open and operate with, I call, safe space, get back to some normality, get our country back in turn. And it should be their decision to make, not the governor anywhere else. Their customers, let's say the COVID goes through here. People weren't going to go out. They were scared to death. People were, it was going to go like this. People weren't going to be going to businesses. Then it would have been the case of the business owner, am I going to shut my business down for a while till we get to the other side? It should have been left in the hands of the businessmen and the customers, the voters, the citizens of Lycoming County. And on the other hand of that, you have the hospital facilities that they shut down their practices that could catch detection early of certain diseases. We cut off that. We declared that it wasn't necessary. So you have people going around now that could, but more importantly, the hospitals right now, how many patients are in our hospitals?
There's none in Lycoming.
There's none in Lycoming. There's not.
No, none in the ICU.
So we have hospitals that have lost a lot of money, and people that are going to be, and healthcare is going to be looking for a bailout, right, just in our area? We've got to get America back open and let the doctors, back to the hospitals, are they different from the normal business? They'll figure out how to keep everybody safe. Leave it in the hand of the American citizen, the mayor of business owner, the doctors. And then the last one I wanted to hit was churches, okay, freedom of religious. The ministers, the priests, the rabbis, they would have made the decision. I already know Pastor Tim that writes for the Web Weekly Faith Wesleyan Church, he was planning on shutting his church down and going to an online-type service prior to the governor dictating that he had to do it, because he wanted to protect his older members. Church attendance was going down, and it was the right thing to do. His parishioners understood that, and Antioch, I helped Antioch out with their Easter egg hunt, which there wasn't, and we did some, they understood, and they went early to an online, to a Zoom, I think it's Zoom, live stream, or, and the religious leaders understood how to protect. They didn't need the governor. And I'm going to kick that back to you.
Well, I want to, okay, I'll tell you what. I want to challenge you on that.
Okay, good.
And the reason I want to challenge you is, I was shocked to see airlines where people were packed in, where doctor, a doctor who had volunteered from the West Coast to take care of patients in New York City's ICU, the only thing that he asked for was return fare.
Right.
They, you saw that on the news.
Oh, I did.
They sent it back in a plane. He said, I had more concern about getting COVID-19 on the plane than I did when I was in the ICU. So it's not that business isn't going to try to do what's best, but business also is not empowered with the responsibility to take care of the public's welfare. That's what government is. In other words, that's what I tried to say. If the government had not taken steps to spread, stop the spread of the pandemic, the government's responsibility is public health and welfare.
You know, I'd like to add to this. As much as I'm critical of the governor for not putting us into the green, or his inconsistencies of the waiver process, you know, what would it be like if we did nothing? Okay, what would those numbers have been like? Would, you know, they just took the information, you know, the governor took the information that he was provided with, just like the president, okay? And when they saw how contagious it was, and it is, there's nothing that moves more rapidly than this, and that's proven. But the asymptomatic is a major, was a major concern. Nobody wants to see the elderly die. And that was what was being presented. So that's why we complied.
Right.
You know, so I don't fault him for doing that, not whatsoever. I think he took the measures that was necessary to provide public safety for us all until we got a grasp. After that, now...
And I agree, I agree with Rick in what, for the two-week period, for a period to gather information and to understand what's happening. And I don't want to get into the wrong numbers and the doc.
And I don't elaborate on that, the two-week period. I want to commend Lycoming College. They're going to open up in the fall.
Absolutely.
There's no reason why they shouldn't. My son went to Liberty University in Virginia. Their dean took incredible criticism for bringing their kids back after a two-week period in late March.
Right.
Sent them home, brought them back two weeks later. And this is in Lynchburg, Virginia. Virginia's a hotspot. They just completed their semester. They did all the precautions they needed to do. The kids wore masks if they wanted to wear a mask. They have several restaurants on campus. They did only takeouts. They did their social distancing. Not one COVID case amongst the staff or the students, 16,000 kids. So it can be done. They did it responsibly.
Go ahead, Rick. I see it.
Well, Jim, you know, it's, one of the things I think that is important for us to do as elected officials, and you as a person who is in the media, you know, Governor Dwyane, Dwyane in Ohio, is a Republican.
Yep.
You know, he had similar, very strict measures. And one can say, yeah, there is no political. It's not Republican or Democrat. But what one can also say is that maybe we as the American people have to start to think, we protect our individual liberties. as the American people have to start to think, we protect our individual liberties. There's no question. I mean, the documents enshrine them. We also have to start to begin to think of the greater good as a community. You know, we, we, we do that when we remember veterans on Veterans Day or Memorial Day. We think of the greater community. We think of the sacrifice of the individual for the greater community. That's what Memorial Day is about, right? It's remembering soldiers who have given their lives so that the greater community would continue to be able to exist and so forth. And so I think part of this is, I think we have to start to try to think in terms of when we recover. What do we do as a community? What do we do as individuals to try to keep our greater community stronger? Because while it is true, the elderly.
You don't think we do that in Lake Coming County every day of the week and every, every week?
No, no, no.
I mean, and I understand in the airline pilot, I mean, I'm talking about here at home in Lake Coming County that.
I'm, I'm talking on a broader scale as such as Americans. Us as Americans, you know, in, in South Korea, in Japan, in Asian countries, the group is always put before the individual. Now, maybe there's too much of extreme on that.
Mm-hmm.
Where, where, where there's shame and where there's, but maybe we need to rethink about our complete egocentric thoughts about the individual at all costs. And I'm not.
But I, I'd like to challenge you. And, and I'll tell you why. Because you think back to our founding fathers, who all thought they were gonna get hung, by the way. They understood the value of freedom and liberty. I mean, you couldn't beat it. I mean, they're brilliant in what they thought to maintain this government the way it is. And they didn't even know if it would work much more than 25 years. But they laid down the foundation for individual freedoms. They laid down all your constitutional rights. And they put like in the Second Amendment, which, which, you know, people say, to own guns. No, it's not about owning the gun that matters. It's about being able to use a gun against a tyrannical government. And so when you take the Patriot Act from the bombings, that took more freedoms away from this individual rights than what this pandemic has, and now the pandemic, and for the greater of the good, okay, of the, the people, no, we cannot continue to erode our constitutional value, our constitutional rights for anything like this, or, or we'll not be here as the United States of America anymore.
No, I'm not talking about eroding our constitutional rights. What I'm trying to say is that.
Three there.
Is that our, as, as a culture and as a nation, I think we have to rethink what our emphasis is on. You know, when we go to church or in our families, we try to teach people in our families that it's, the family is important. I mean, that, the way I was raised, that was an important message, you know, from a single parent, that the family. You don't do certain things because the fam, you wouldn't bring that shame on the family. We talked about that. Right? You wouldn't steal. You wouldn't do other things because that's not tolerated in our family. So I'm not suggesting we allow our individual rights to be trampled on. That's not at all. I think what we have to do is sometimes we have to evaluate whether or not there's a greater good that we need to think about. You know, that's, that's all I'm suggesting.
The individuals that we just honored on Monday, over the weekend, they laid their lives down for our freedoms. They laid them down so that people would have choices, that we don't have the communist China that those people face every day, where they don't have a choice. Okay? These people should have choices in our country, and they do have choices. That's why those people died on that, that sacred lands wherever they passed away, was for our freedoms today and in the future. So we need, as a commissioner, it's our responsibility to argue for those freedoms, to make sure they're not infringed on. And right now, they're being infringed on. There's 600, there's 600 doctors, 600 doctors, medical people. These are the people that are in the profession, that are suffering, watching this every day. They have now come to the president with a letter saying, we need to reopen because of the mass casualties this is gonna cause. The fact that you're gonna have more suicides, more depression, more alcoholism, more addiction, more people unemployed, more poverty. The medical profession's seeing it. People that aren't being screened for cancers and heart diseases. Those people are gonna start to be casualties, casualties of these disease. So this has far-reaching tentacles. And we need to make sure that we get things reopened, because if we don't do so, we have 600 doctors now saying, we have to reopen now. Now's the time. We can't keep waiting.
You know, if I could just piggyback on one of your comments. We talk about the, the veterans, you know? But there are many people throughout the world who fight and lay their lives down against oppression. The gentleman from Tiananmen Square, you know, that's so vivid in my mind today, that he was fighting for individual freedoms. And, and we should never be that afraid, no matter what it is. We should never be that afraid that we, we, we lose those. And I, I just can't express, you know, enough how important it is that we never lose those. And they never lose the dream of being free. And if we start to falter here in America, the world has no chance.
Moving back, I think we're all united that we need to reopen Lake Coming County. I applaud you guys. You've sent a strong message to the governor. Hopefully, he reads it. What, what are my criticisms, and I don't have any problem saying with the governor, is where's he been? You know, if I'm the leader, I don't hole up in a situation like that. I'm out visiting the counties. I'm out seeing what's going on. I'm out getting, seeing the medical professionals in the different areas. Have we had him to Lake Coming County?
Not at all. And, and I'll tell you this much. If we do not hear from him by Friday, I personally am driving to Harrisburg and demanding to see him. I will demand to see him and I'll express to him, I want you to tell me face to face, face to face, why you're keeping our county shut down. Okay? I think it's very important to have face-to-face contact. And that hasn't happened.
And, and again, he should come to Lake Coming County to get the actual feel and be explained by the people that run the county and know what's going on. This is what we got. We have a hotspot up here. We have all but one death from here and one in a nursing home. These are the facts of the county. And he should talk with Commissioner Maribito. Him, him and Commissioner Maribito, we'll put him in a room, let him go over, because Commissioner Maribito's gonna give him a different opinion, and that's by the way our country and our government's supposed to work. At the end, you're all united that we should open. But by him not having that interaction, do I think he should talk to everybody in every county? Absolutely. And if anybody thinks our governor shouldn't be doing, he should be in correspondence with the elected officials above and beyond anything that's ever happened in our nation. This has never happened.
Jim, they reached out.
We're, we're business and a county's been, and, and I'm sorry, Mr. Governor, if you're taking this a little hard from the folks at Lake Coming County. We don't even know you. You don't want to be, you, you don't come, and I understand there's a big pandemic and a disease, and you don't want, that is your job, sir. You should have been going out and getting the strait skinny from the counties, from the people running the counties. I know we have elected officials to do that, but it's just like a ballgame. If you're coaching a ballgame and you're at the ballgame on the field or in the press box, there's no better place to understand what plays to call in that ballgame, as are gentlemen. As opposed to watching it on TV or watching it in the state capitol, you need to understand what the feel and what's going on in that ballgame. And again, I feel the governor has not done that. He has not gone out and about. He has not gotten that feel. He has not.
Well, Jim, so you should know that the governor had a call with all the commissioners who were, wanted to join in a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Obviously, and again, I mean, look, you know, the governor has a big state. There's over 12 million people. And while we've had 19 deaths in this county, in other counties, there have been, well, literally hundreds of deaths, right?
Absolutely.
Thousands in some, even up here.
Absolutely.
You know, they, they operate through the Department of Health. Now, we don't have a department, we don't have a health department in this county, but we work through our emergency management structure.
We have outstanding people that, that take care of things and.
Right. I think, I mean, I'm just trying to be realistic. I don't think that the problem is that he doesn't know, and I'm not, I don't want to offend you, Jim. It's not that he doesn't know what's going on. I think that they are trying to do this in what I would call a scientific way. You know, it's a public health.
The scientists have been wrong. They're batting below 25% on anything that's, I could make the just, they're batting a zero.
Well, except that we, you know, guys, listen, we have the largest number of deaths in the entire world. We have the richest healthcare system in the world, and we have the most deaths in the entire world.
Maybe, by the way, we report them too. But let me, let me get back to this point.
Well, let me just say, part of the, this is what I got to before when I talked about this focus on the individual. Public health problems have to be solved with a collective approach. That's what I'm trying to say. You know?
But Commissioner, and I want to go back to your point, Jim. And, and excuse me for not telling you this, but we, as a County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, felt the very same way. You're, you're not getting input from the commissioners, who is closest to the people. But last Friday, I believe, he, he invited our association a, a leadership team to meet with him on a daily basis. You know, I, I don't want to say he's ignoring us totally.
Right. And we got.
But it seemed that, that he was.
And our representatives, I, I guess I should throw in there, have done a great job. Our Rep. Garth Everett, Jeff Wheel, our representatives have done a great job lobbying our case and presenting information. And I know that they're within the discussion. The only thing that worries me, as you say, it's not about him not knowing or understanding, that only leaves one other choice of why we're still closed. Politics. And I didn't want to go there.
Jim, I'm, I'm. Yeah, I really don't think it's, Jim, I don't think it's politics. I mean, it's not, I don't understand how people can think that it's politics. Look, this is a public health problem, and it requires a public health solution. What that means is that there are numbers that diseases spread at a certain rate, and they infect a certain of the people.
But they have not gotten any of that right, Mr. Maribito. Their numbers have wrong.
I, I'm a very blunt, straightforward person. I don't care about what party or whatever. I'm not a politician. I say it like it is. Okay? And I'll say it like it is now. Whether you like the president or you don't, the mayor reaches out to his 50 governors. He reaches out to the 50 governors.
More than I would.
He reached out to the commissioners at NACO.
Constantly.
He reaches out to the people below him because he knows it starts from the bottom up. From the bottom up. Okay?
Right.
Our governor did reach out to us for seven weeks. He was urged by Representative Everett, Wheelman, Congressman Keller, and Senator Y'all. You need to talk to the county commissioners. He finally did so, and he's got CCAP on board. Okay?
Right.
They reached out to the county commissioners of center county on Friday. Do you want to open? No. Then they change their mind? Yes. They didn't reach out to us. Reach out to us. Reach out to our medical centers, Geisinger, UPMC. Do you have enough beds? Can you do something if, if it starts to go the other way? Speak to the people that are in the trenches for crying out loud.
That's what a good general does.
Right. And he didn't do that. And this is why the reason of this letter.
And, and you guys.
Is to give him the facts and ask him to reconsider. Okay? And if he doesn't really reconsider in writing and get back to me in writing, then I'll be in the car on Monday, driving to Harrisburg, whoever wants to go with me, to ask, why can't you answer our letter? Why can't you give us our metrics? We need to know what's going on because our people are hurting incredibly. And it's not fair.
Obviously, we can talk about this all day, but in closing, I, I admire you, gentlemen, for the leadership you provide to Lake Coming County. And, and the most amazing thing, we live in the greatest country in the world, and we can have different opinions, and we can come together in one letter. We, we know, and God bless you, Mr. Maribito, you have different opinions, and, and I respect you, and you provide balance to government. And that's how the system has to work. And that's why I feel this letter and the belief is so strong, that you guys have come together. Anything you want to say in closing, Mr. Maser?
No, you know, you, you stated it as best as you can. I mean, and, and that is the truth. We, we try to work together as county commissioners.
And you do a great job.
And it doesn't, it's not about party. It's about what's good for the people.
Rick, we'll close. I know you guys got another interview.
No, listen, thank you so much for taking the time to talk to us.
Oh, you're welcome.
And the public should feel free to contact us. Tell us whether they're happy with the job that we've done. And let us know if they are happy or if they're not happy. And we'd be happy to hear from them. We really would.
And they're sincere about that, and I know he is. Back to you, Mr. Chairman, last word, and we'll get out of here.
We serve the people. That's what we're, we're out there fighting for.
God bless America. Let's get Lake Coming County reopened.